All right, council come to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, will you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Brainerhorst, here, Nancy.
Here.
Stevall.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Score.
Here.
So we continue to have a virtual opportunity for people to listen in and participate in our meeting. So those of you attending via the phone will be able to provide your comments during the dedicated public forums. Please keep your microphones and telephones on mute until you speak, wish to speak. And if you're viewing the meeting presentation online and experiencing delay, the full meeting presentation can also be viewed at the City of Pella website. I would like to announce a policy and planning meeting following our regular meeting tonight to discuss Boss Ridge Development screening request. Also announce that Agenda Item B4, Line 1, A Closed Session, has been pulled from the agenda. Knowing that, do I have a motion for approval of the tentative agenda as amended? Some move. Banstra, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Score.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Stevall.
Yes. Motion passed. This time, I'm going to read a proclamation declaring neurofibromatosis awareness. May is the month. Kathryn Doherty is here, whose grandson suffers from this ailment. And so I want to read this proclamation. And then Kathryn wants to make a couple of comments. I will come over here and do that. And then I want to present you with the proclamation. Whereas although more than 2 million people around the world are living with NF, and one in every 3,000 births is diagnosed with NF, it is relatively unknown to the public. And whereas NF causes tumors to grow on nerves throughout the body, it also can affect the development of the brain, cardiovascular system, bones, and skin, leading to blindness, deafness, bone abnormalities, disability, learning disabilities, disabling pain, and cancer. And whereas Children's Tumor Foundation leads efforts to promote and financially sponsor world-class medical research in finding effective treatments and ultimately in care for NF. And whereas much remains to be done in raising public awareness of NF to help promote early diagnosis, proper management, treatment, prevention of complications, and support for research. Now, therefore, I, Don Ward, the Mayor of Pella, in recognition of this important initiative, do hereby proclaim May 17, 2021, as Neurofibromatosis Awareness Day, and May 2021, as Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month in the City of Pella, and subdate this fourth day of May, 2021. Kathryn, I will present this proclamation to you. And I know you'll be able to make some comments.
Thank you very much.
You can do it here, so we can not hear you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Mayor DuPont and city council members, on behalf of the NF community, my family, my grandson, and myself, I thank you for seeing the importance of making this proclamation. Neurofibromatosis is a disorder that is very lesser known than cystic fibrosis, Huntington's disease, or muscular dystrophy. Yet, 1 in 3,000 individuals will be diagnosed with NF1, 25,000 with NF2, and 40,000 with swanomatosis. Therefore, there are probably somebody, you may know someone, who has this disorder. It can be visible or invisible. It's visible when you see the tumors that grow on the outside of the body, maybe on their face, or their neck, or their arms. Or, in our grandson's case, where his bone is, his tibia bone is bowed. So he has a deformity because of this disorder. It is invisible when people have a learning disability, or maybe they have the tumors that are growing inside their body, along their spine, or in their brain. It can cause excruciating pain for these individuals. And it can also be very difficult to try and explain to people, especially when the disorder is not visible to other people, why they maybe are the way they are. Children's Tumor Foundation, along with hundreds of volunteers across the country, are working very hard this month of May to bring awareness to this disorder. We also have a Shine a Light Walk in major cities throughout the country to raise funds, to fund the research that is being done, to one day find a cure for NF. There is no cure. Last April, there was a drug approved by the FDA that will help shrink tumors in children. But there's still so much work to be done, because they still have not found something that is available for adults, or for NF2, or for swanomatosis. So that research is still being done. So with your help in making NF visible in Pella, maybe one day, we can say, "We end it, NF." So I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Our grandson, Tristan, is three years old. He was diagnosed when he was 14 months. He has a bowed tibia, which, when he went to the University of Iowa to be diagnosed, the doctor there said, "Well, the best thing that we could do was, would be to amputate his leg, because he would never know the difference." Thankfully, my daughter-in-law said, "No, we're not going to stand for that at this point in time." There's hopefully 20, or 30, or 40 years of medical research that maybe can help this situation. So she was fortunate enough that she found a doctor, the Mayo Quinney in Rochester, that has done, I think Tristan was the second one to have this surgery done, where they put a plate, in the growth plate of the ankle, and they hope that it will bring that bowed tibia back in line. And therefore strengthen that bone too, because having a break would be a disaster, because they do not heal well. So he wears a brace on his leg right now. Not that it's going to make any difference for the deformity, but it will protect that bone from being broken. So he wears a brace pretty much all the time, except when he's in bed. So, but he's a typical three-year-old. He loves cars, he loves Lagos, and he plays and interacts with children just like everyone else. But, so, he is our hero. He is our NF hero. And if you want to know more about this disorder, go to ctf.org, and you can find out more about what the disorder is, along with what Children's Tumor Foundation is doing to help bring this to an end. So, again, I thank you, truly, truly thank you. This is an important proclamation. Bringing this awareness will help all people know what this is about, and maybe help to end this once and for all. So I thank you for seeing the importance of this.
Well, thank you so much for the information.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. It's time now for a public forum. If there's anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, I need a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Some move.
Support. Brainerhorst, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Score.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Stevall.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to petitions and communications, a special event permit request for Lake Red Rock Balloon Fest. Mike, please explain.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to direct the council's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item. Tonight's request comes to us from the Red Rock Army Corps of Engineers, along with our local CVB. Specifically, they're requesting a special event permit for the Lake Red Rock Balloon Fest. It's supposed to be held at the Paul Sports Park on Saturday, July 10, from 1:00 to 10:00 p.m. Now, a little bit of background on the event, but it's approved by council tonight. Approximately 40 Javier balloon pilots would be launched toward the sports park. Gold floating over Pella is quite a scene from past events that have taken place down at Lake Red Rock as well. It is important to note, Mr. Mayor, that all pertinent departments have reviewed this application, and the BN insurance certificate have been received. And we are recommending a conditional approval this evening, with the understanding that if there is an order from the governor of the state of Iowa, or a local order from Mayor of the state concerning the COVID-19 pandemic, the event may have to be canceled. So with that, that concludes SaaS's presentation this evening. And I would be remiss if I didn't state that we do have a map and a proposed location for the balloon fest at the Paul Sports Park. So with that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Some move.
Score, DeYoung, discussion?
Probably hoping for not a west wind, I guess.
So, Jill, I received a call from a resident of Fairhaven the other day, and was requesting that the balloons fly right over top of Fairhaven. So that they can sit on the porch and see them.
Yes.
So I said, "Well, if anybody can get that done, Jill can." So I would pass that along.
Thanks, Don. No pressure, right?
So anyway, if you can get one over Fairhaven, maybe somebody can alert them that they're up or something. They would enjoy it.
Well, we're still going to try to attempt to get them fairly over the lake area, but that'll kind of be our home base, and do the night glow and so forth at the sports park. We're excited to work with the city in this alternate plan for this year. So, you guys want to add anything?
Well, we're going to target over Fairhaven.
And Mayor, you know, you're supposed to fly, but, you know.
Yeah.
I know you're supposed to fly.
I think a target, yeah, right in their yard. That would, they would enjoy that, I'm sure.
Saturday morning is, we are going to try to get over the sports park too, because we're having a 5:10 here. So it should be pretty good for Pella Saturday morning. After I've been at six a.m.
Okay, any other questions or anything, council? All right, we'll move to vote. So all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Score.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Stevall.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. It's always a great event. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate, so they can all get up a few times. Thanks. Okay, moving on to resolutions. Resolution number 6287 entitled, "Resolution Amending the City of Pella's Purchasing Policy." This is, yeah. Mike, I know we talked about it. Play in this one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. And once again, I'd like to direct the council's attention to the big board. It is very important to note, as far as the proposed amendment to the city's purchasing policy, this is the exact same amendment that we did discuss at our April 20 meeting as well. Now, as we discussed on April 20, really, the driving force behind this amendment is we did receive a request from the fire department for a cooperative purchase, assistance in purchasing for the proposed fire truck replacement that they had planned for this next upcoming fiscal year. And so as far as the amendment that is considered this evening, Mandy, I think we have highlighted the important areas or the major areas that have been amended. Since we are updating the city's purchasing policy, we've taken that opportunity on a lot of these items, I would say, to address really this housekeeping items. In other words, updating language that we have in our purchasing policy to match state code and so on. But with this, it's highlighted the areas that we are proposing amendments or wording changes to the personal policy. And in some of these cases, for instance, in emergency purchasing, emergency purchases, it's really form over substance on it. This has been going on for years, as far as the documentation at the department levels. We've just now included that language in the purchasing policy amendment as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation this evening. We are recommending approval of it. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Some move.
Support. Brainerhorst, DeYoung, any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Stevall.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Score.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Item 2, Resolution Number 6288 entitled, "Resolution Approving a Lease Agreement with Liberty Street Kitchen for rental of 1,179 square feet of the Mollengrath Plaza for outdoor dining." Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor DuPont stated, with this resolution, we do approve a lease agreement of Liberty Street Kitchen for rental of a portion of the Mollengrath Plaza area. We do have highlights up on the big board of the key terms of the lease agreement. They were also included in the council pack. It is important to note that this lease term, which was being proposed this evening, is very similar to previous fiscal years. Or, we've also leased the same space to the Liberty Street kitchens as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, we do have the highlighted area for the leased, leased area showing up on the big board. And once again, this is very similar to what was done in 2019 as well as 2020, Mr. Mayor. And with that, we are recommending approval this evening of the lease agreement. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Some move.
Support. Score, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Score.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Stevall.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 3, Resolution Number 6289 entitled, "Resolution Accepting Public Improvements for Prairie Ridge Sanitary Sewer Lift Station." Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor DuPont stated, with this resolution, we do accept, actually, the sanitary sewer lift station improvement that has been constructed to serve the Prairie Ridge development. It is important to note, the engineer for the project was a Clirion Associates, and they have provided the city with the certificate. The improvements are substantially completed and improved, and have been constructed, rather, in accordance with the city's standards for public infrastructure as well. Now, as far as the one remaining item that we have that's left on this item is the developer's responsibility to provide a $5,000 performance bond for the remaining minor worth that's left on the punch list items. And so it's very minor in scope, as the overall cost of the lift station is right around $650,000. Now, with this, a recommendation, CD, for accepting the lift station is conditional upon the developer, actually, is upon the condition of the receipt of the $5,000 performance bond for the sanitary sewer lift station. With that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that is everything from the city's presentation. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Some move.
Support. Stevall, Hopkins, any discussion?
Michael, does that fall in our electric district or not? I don't know.
I want to say that that is actually within our electric territory, so.
I think it's part of the front piece that falls into REC. They originally owned that front piece, is why they bought it, so.
Of the overall development, but this portion, this portion is within our territory.
Including options.
Yeah. I think that 69 K V line is kind of the boundary there, I think.
So any demarcation, you are correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think all Phase 1 there is in our electric. Anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Stevall.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Score.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4, Resolution Number 6290 entitled, "Resolution Fixing Date for a Public Hearing on the Proposed Vacation of a Public Utility Easement." Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct the council's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. And I want to state right from the get-go, what we're simply doing tonight is setting the public hearing date for a vacation of a 10-foot public utility easement. Public hearing date is May 18. And in essence, this is out of the viewpoint, New Pond Dominion Development that's being constructed right in the vicinity of the Prairie Ridge development as well. The easement that we're showing is actually between lots 4 and 5. Up here currently, there are no public utilities located in the easement area. And staff has reviewed this matter, and we are proposing a vacation of the easement area. So that's what will be discussed during the public hearing on May 18. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation this evening. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Some move.
Support. Banstra, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Stevall.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Score.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinances. Number 1, ordinance number 990 entitled, "In ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by changing the zoning classification of property generally located at 503 Main Street, City of Pella, Marion County, Iowa." This is the third reading. We have had two pretty exhaustive presentations about this. And if there, unless there's someone that wants to ask a question or make a comment, I think we will go right for a motion for approval. Is there any questions, comments anybody wants to make out there? Okay, then I'm going to ask for a motion for approval.
Some moves.
Support. Brainerhorst, Support. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Score.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Stevall.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Support.
Who did that? Bruce? Who did that?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Stevall.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Score.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number 2, ordinance number 991 entitled, "In ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by conditionally amending the boundaries of the M1 District to include the property legally described in Exhibit A, and directing the planning and zoning director to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map." This is the second reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct the mayor and council's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. Tonight's rezoning request comes to us from Mr. Bruce Stevall. And a parcel that we are looking to, for this evening's rezoning request is the yellow highlighted area on the big board. For those all in at home, I'm on Slide Number 19. And orientate council to the area of Washington Street is looking right down here in the south. The Walmart development is right over here to the east. And the yellow highlighted area is the area of the rezoning request. And as Mayor DuPont stated, this parcel is actually has a dual zoning district. The northern half of this parcel, somewhere right in this vicinity, this is A1 Ag. The southern half of the parcel is roughly CC or Community Commercial. So tonight, what the request is, is actually a conditional request. And the reason it's a conditional request is because there's some use limitations with the property. But in essence, for the whole, just shy of 10-acre parcel, what's being requested is to rezon on a conditional use basis to M1 Limited Light Industrial. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And we do have a description up on the big board of the M1 District. But as you can see from the map, the orange highlighted area is the M1 District. Just south of Washington Street, the Fife Field Industrial area, there's numerous properties. There's only M1. We actually have some M2 that is just east of this as well, or M1, excuse me, just to the east of Fife Core. CC is the green highlighted area here. And I'm looking at this, and being reviewed by staff and the city attorney, because there is M1 in close proximity to this location, we do not believe that constitutes any spot zoning issues with M1. But once again, we do have a description, and it was also included in the council package on the uses associated with M1. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as we stated earlier, it's very important when we consider this request that this is a conditional use request on this. And generally speaking, when we talk about broad uses that may be prevented at some point in time on this, there's been several that have been eliminated that are traditionally allowed in M1. And they're generally the items that you wouldn't necessarily associate with limited light industrial uses on it. So with the rezoning request, we feel that we have a very true limited light industrial rezoning request. With this, it is important to note with the conditional uses that it is even more limited than the uses listed up on the big board, specifically for the initial get-go. They'll be limited to an office use and also trade service use as well, as the property is also being required to be developed in Exhibit, in accordance with Exhibit 1 of the agreement as well. I would be remiss if I did not state that there are screening requirements that we have with the development that's been installed in the ordinance, as well as design standards for any buildings that are being built on the property as well. The proposed rendition that we have listed up on the big board is the office building that's being proposed by Mr. Stevall as well. So we believe that will be a very nice addition to our community. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And as we stated with this, one of the key concepts that we have here, and anytime you start looking at conditional uses, one of the things that we're looking at, the reason why we are gearing towards or recommending conditional uses is to address any type of land use compatibility issues that may arise with the property. We'll be looking at those, or explaining those when we talk about the city's comprehensive plan. But it's very important, even when we consider this request, that this is one of the main exhibits of the ordinance. And what this does is it provides an overview of what the property will be used for. And with this, we have the office building that is being required to be built for the ordinance in 2021. The trade service uses established in Buildings 2 and 3 must be established within five years of occupancy for Building Number 1 as well. So with that, those are the three buildings that are being proposed for the building. Two uses, we have an office use and a trade service use. So our understanding that Mr. Stevall desires to move his current electrical business to this portion of the property, or to this location. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the comprehensive plan, it's very important to note, anytime we talk about conformity with the city's comprehensive plan, we need to take a look at the entire document, and not just focus on certain segments of the document. In this particular case, when we look at the feature used land map, it has identified the property for high density residential, and that's been in the comp plan for some time on the matter. It is important to note that there are other aspects of the comprehensive plan that align very closely with this rezoning request. Number 1, one of the essential or strategic goals of the comprehensive plan was additional economic development for the community. And we certainly believe with three additional buildings being proposed by Mr. Stevall within the next five years, that it does align with the key strategic goal of the comprehensive plan. It's also important to note that one of the key things that we look at the comprehensive plan anytime we have a rezoning request is the land use compatibility matrix on it. In this particular case, we really believe in looking at this in these uses, that it's really limited down to two primary uses, an office use and an M1 or a trade services use. We believe that is compatible with the existing area. That, plus the design standards on it, we believe that it does address any type of land use compatibility issues with this conditional rezoning request. Based on our review, we are recommending, and we do believe that this does align with the city's comprehensive plan. It does meet a key strategic goal of additional economic development for the community. And we also believe that it satisfies the intent of the comprehensive plan, which is really to promote land use compatibility as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. All righty. Okay, lucky for me, we're at the end of the presentation. With this, it is important to note that the funding and zoning commission did review this request, and this additional rezoning request was unanimously approved at the commission's level. And SaaS's recommendation this evening, Mr. Mayor, is for approval as well.
Okay.
That does conclude our presentation. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Some move.
Support. DeYoung, Banstra, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no.